Yeah.
Okay.
You want. You have yourselves accordingly.
Look, they lay.
We want to do a sound check.
We do a sound check. It sounds like some.
Yeah. Sounds of silence. There they come. They had to go to the snack bar.
Still got two minutes.
Okay, Joe, we can hear you. Jeff, what about you? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Schuster.
Good evening.
Okay.
All clear.
All right, we've got your name up. We don't have a photo.
Well, here it comes. There we go.
It sounded like an Eeyore impression.
Okay, we've got seven thirty. Let's call the meeting to order. The Legions.
Legion.
Which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Brainerd.
Yes.
Okay, we've got six members present. We have got a four. We've got a meeting. According to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation of the governor, we can continue with remote meetings until December eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. What's to be? We have in person in the hall trustee Brainerd, Dattley, Harney, Hoffman, and Thorne, myself, the village clerk, along with village finance director Eugene Van, public courts director Kyle Killinger, chief of police Sam Parma. Attending remotely is trustee Nemec, village engineers Jeff Steele, and village attorney Mark Schuster. As we have a remote attendance, all votes will be by roll call this evening. All right, minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of December, of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Approve the regular board meeting minutes of eleven fifteen twenty-two.
Second. Moved by Harney, seconded by Hoffman, approved the minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Any additions or corrections? Being number, roll call please. Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Epstein.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Five affirmances, one abstention, motion so passes. That's our approval. Okay, the next item is the president's report. And the attempt to keep things moving smoothly and quickly this evening, I will pass. No report. Clark's report, no report. No report. Planning and zoning, no report. Attorney, Mr. Schuster.
Mr. President, no report. We've got some action items down farther on the agenda, however.
Okay, thank you, sir. Engineering department, Mr. Steele.
I'm going to break up the no reports by saying that you'll notice that the street program, the two thousand twenty-one street program is all complete. There'll be probably be a pay estimate at the next board meeting. Just a heads up is this year we ran into some weather, obviously, as you've noticed, and the project was delayed greatly. So next year, if possible, is I'd like to at least get an idea of what we're going to be doing and at least get all the bid books done at the beginning of the year. That way, whenever we know the exact amount is, we can actually just put it out for bid right then and there, rather than having to wait until the end of the year and worrying about snow and cold weather. So. Other than that, I believe I'll be talking later on about the water main replacement project. So I will talk to you then.
You can do that now since it's all under your, all your, for all your hard work. I had nothing to do with it. So if you want to cover it now, that would be great.
Sure, sure. Put it all on me.
Hold on, Joe. Let's get through the audit first. We've got a gentleman here from Mueller's to present the audit.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Finance.
Motion to approve warrants in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. This is a little bit higher than we normally would do, but of this is seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars, which is a sleepy hollow road project. It's our eighty percent to the contractor. For its eighty percent of our twenty percent.
So move Dattley.
Second.
Moved by Dattley, seconded by Thorne to approve the accounts payable for December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Questions? Comments? I've got one. I noticed in here that we're paying a couple of bucks to purchase electrical panels for the sewer systems and grinder pumps. We've got about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars there.
These are checks right now.
My question is, can we submit these for reimbursement through the ARPA funds?
Probably could.
This stuff is sewer related. We've got two hundred and twenty thousand dollars sitting out there.
Is that the COVID funds? Why wouldn't we submit that?
That's what I'm asking. If it's a permissible expense, you start, you know, tagging those into ARPA.
I would consider it sewer infrastructure, so.
Okay. Just the thing I noticed when I was looking at it. Gee, can we possibly get some reimbursement on this from those funds? So. Okay, no other questions or comments concerning the warrants for this evening? Roll call please. Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Before I say aye, could I ask, can we do we pay that first, or can we submit it to them and then have payment? Or how do we do that? Or we'll just submit for reimbursement?
I suppose we submit for reimbursement. Right, we'll pay first and then just transfer the money.
Okay, all right, aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, motion so passes. Gentlemen. Next item on the agenda. Comments from the public. Mr. Samuel, would you like to comment from the public?
No, sir. I just wanted to comment. The first time I've been here since April, I just want to see how things are going.
All right, we still pay the bills.
I'm here to see.
You saw that.
I want to hear about the art.
Okay, fair enough. No comments from the public. We do have an eight o'clock time slot for the audit report. We are at that point in our agenda. Go right on to it. Doctor's ready.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Dosso with Miller and Company, and we did perform the audit for the year ended, the first year of two thousand twenty-one. I'm going to go through some of the results. Everyone's got to have the statements. I'm going to start on pages Roman numeral two and three, which is the independent auditors' report. Really our additions to financial statements. What it says is that we have audited the financial statements of the village as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. We're going to talk about the responsibilities of both management and the auditors. Now, as far as management's responsibilities, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. This includes the design and implementation of internal controls related to the preparation and the presentation of the statements that are free from material and statement. As far as our responsibility as auditors, our responsibility is to express opinions on statements based on our audit. And we conducted our audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards. This requires that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the statements are free from material and state. This involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about amounts and disclosures in the statements. The procedures selected depend on our judgment and our assessment of the risks of material and state. During this process, we evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies, estimates, as well as the overall presentation of the statements. Page Roman numeral three shows our opinion on the statements. And what it says is that, in our opinion, the financial statements of the village are presented fairly in all material respects to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. I'm going to go ahead now and move on to the management's discussion and analysis, which is on page, starts on page Roman numeral four. The M D A that it's called is unaudited, but it's a really good summary of the year and good information for your review. To explain some of the important information that you see in the statements that follow. Page Roman numeral seven gives a summary of the assets, liabilities, and current amounts for both the current and prior year. As you can see in that table, net position for the village increased by about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand to a total of eight point six million dollars at year-end. Net position of the governmental activities increased almost five hundred thousand dollars. And there's a slight decrease in the net position of business-type activities. Total assets for the village increased by about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the year. And liabilities and deferred amounts were very similar to what they reflected at the end of last year. Page Roman numeral eight shows a table with details about that increase in net position during the year. The village had two point four million dollars in general and program revenues related to governmental activities. That was up approximately eighteen percent from last year. Governmental expenses were approximately one point nine million dollars for the year. And that was about a one percent increase from the year before. Some of that increase is attributed to some of the road projects that were undertaken during the current year. Revenue is from business-type activities increased by about five percent from last year, and that would be the water and sewer activities of the village. And the village had just over one million dollars in revenue in that area for two thousand twenty-one. Business-type expenses increased by about twelve percent from last year. Again, the village had about a million dollars in expenses related to the business-type activities of the year. Page Roman numeral ten. It was an analysis of the village's funds. So the first part was a show, you know, the government live presentation of us. Second part relates to the funds of the village. The governmental funds reported any fund balance, practically one point seven million dollars at year-end. And that's an increase of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars from last year. Page Roman numeral eleven is some discussion of the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village. General fund fund balance remained unchanged during the year and ended the year at about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is unassigned and is available for the operations and ongoing activities of the village. As far as budgeted expenditures, I wanted to mention that the general fund expenditures for the year were about thirty-four thousand dollars less than about two percent lower than it is. Budgeted revenues were about four hundred and forty thousand more than we anticipated for the year. Page Roman numeral eleven showed a table of the capital assets of the village for the past few years. And as you can see, balance and totals fairly stated near the year. The additions that the village had for the year were offset by the depreciation accumulated here. Page Roman numeral twelve discusses some of the long-term liabilities of the village. And the village had a loan balance of about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars at year-end. Page Roman numeral twelve also discusses some of the upcoming initiatives for the village. So some, again, some good information for your review. Statements themselves follow the M D A that I just covered. But again, that M D A gave a really good overview of what you'll see following the statements. So I'm going to go ahead and move to page fourteen of the financial statements, which is where the footnotes begin. The footnotes present some information about the village and the policies of the village and some critical information that should be read along with the statements themselves. I'm going to go ahead and point out some of the, some of the key footnotes here to bring to your attention. Page twenty-four. I talked earlier in the M D A about capital assets of the village. Page twenty-four shows some detailed information for the year and the assets of the village, shows the additions and appreciation of the village by specific type of asset. Page twenty-six shows the table of the long-term debt of the village. Again, as I mentioned before, at year-end, it was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar loan balance at year-end. And as you can see, seventy-two thousand was paid towards that at longer and longer. Page twenty-seven shows the table of fund balances at the end of this year. And again, at year-end, there's about one point seven million dollars in total of fund balance. About four hundred and seventy thousand of that is restricted for certain street projects. Another four hundred and seventy thousand is assigned for capital projects throughout the village. That leaves about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of April for, again, which is assigned and is available for ongoing operations and activities of the village. Now, the remainder of the statements are more detailed, schedules of the information that I provided already shows the reach fund, the current year activity versus the budgeted that could be for the year. Again, some good information for your review and analysis. The information that I've covered really kind of summarizes that information. And again, this is just more specific detail, minute and detail that you can see as part of comparison. And so that really is an analysis or kind of an overview of the statements themselves. We've got a couple other letters that we issued along with these statements. But before I even went through them, I wanted to see if there were any questions.
You want to have any questions? Oh. Yes, Tom.
We used to have a fund balance procedure, kind of procedure, but
a rule that you had to compute the end of the, end of balances for like so many months of cash payments. Do we still look at that?
Already done.
Did you, did that look at?
We transferred the money to, to the budget.
Alright.
Okay. Um, so the, the next letter that I wanted to talk about is what we call our conclusion letter, and it really just summarizes the audit process itself, so I just wanted to go through a couple highlights of that order of views. And I think everyone should have had the letter, but what it says basically is that uh, the financial statement disclosures, in our opinion, are neutral, consistent, and clear. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management during the process of completing our audit. There were no disagreements that arose during the course of the audit regarding any matters. And really, just in general, you know, we had to transition this year, um, from previous audit firm to us, and also a transition of some of the finance staff, so we wanted to really thank Eugene and the staff for helping us through that transition and providing all the information to us in a timely manner and completed a very organized manner, so I wanted to, you know, say thank you for, for that process. And so that really is kind of a summary of probably what I want from our perspective. Any questions on, on that?
Tom? Any questions?
Well, I had one other question I had regarding the finances that, I think in twenty eighteen, we set up for, uh, we were gonna have the water come up, we were developing a long, long-term debt to pay for the water main. Did we ever finally put that together?
Eugene's got that on his to-do list.
So now we take the enterprise funds paying back the general fund for the money that, that we've paid over the last three years. Okay, right, thank you.
Don was on the board for twenty years. This is the last project that he was involved in.
They didn't catch me with the funds.
Okay, um, the last thing I wanted to mention, along with the reports and the conclusion letters, we issued a management, uh, comment letter, so I just wanted to mention, there was a, a management comment related to water, so we're, general ledger system, which, you know, is being worked on, so just wanted to mention that. Um, and it did not affect our, you know, our statements for some of the any questions about anything?
I just felt that the issue has kind of been identified and, and, uh, we were very close to a resolution, so we won't have to do that at all.
So in that case, you know, in the, you know, subsequent year, then that
It's, it's other way. I've had to do it, you know, up until this point, but now that I it should be good.
Great.
What to refer to, Don, is Ellen had been making a monthly adjustment to the water and sewer, uh, account, because there was a discrepancy with the billing. So she attempted to do a manual adjustment. Well, when she left, Henry dropped that problem. So Eugene was in, and they were looking, why are you making twenty five K adjustments annually for this account? Eugene looked into it, and we got an issue in M S I, the accounting software that does the billing for the water and sewer. There's something in there that's not relating to correct numbers. And Eugene's found out where it is, exactly what it is, we're not quite sure, but we, you know, he's eliminated the prospect down to where the problem is. Should have that resolved issue.
Yeah, I don't remember hearing about that.
That's because Ellen did it every month. She just made the, you know, changes and moved on. She knew the issue was there, but Henry just dropped it altogether. So when Eugene stepped in, the auditors were asking, well, why do you keep doing this for? We had no idea, and so Eugene dug into it, found out that that's what has happened.
In, in a nutshell, what happens is that in the A P system, it works, it talks directly to the general ledger, and so it automatically puts those transactions in there. Utility billing was not talking to the general ledger. So everything was being put in manually, and so when adjustments were made and when payments were made, if they weren't done exactly the way they were in U B, then you would end up having to do adjustments. Um, at, at the time that Henry had left and, um, the other audit firm took over, they had a ten thousand dollar too high balance at the start of the year, and then by the end of the year, they had to do a twenty five thousand dollar to over that ten thousand dollars plus all the other corrections. And then, because it was getting incorrectly calculated, that those errors kept getting carried forward. And they, they were offset, you know, every, every month. But, so now that I, I've got the U B talking to the general ledger, so hopefully that won't have, happen anymore.
Okay, so what we're saying is your A R balance is off, not the cash balance?
No, it had nothing to do with cash.
Okay.
It had nothing to do, it, it had to do with the accounts that were built.
Okay, thank you.
That's what they were talking about.
Right, and again, you know, as you said, you're, you're putting an arrow down the issue and process resolving, so again, for the, you know, the next audit, that kind of, that would go away.
Anything else from anyone?
Thank you.
We have a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Oh.
Sir.
George.
Let's review it.
Motion by trustee Hoffman to accept the audit is presented by Mueller, seconded by Hardy. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none. Roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Fredo.
Hi.
Mr. Dadley.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so passes. The audit is accepted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I also like to thank Eugene for enduring through this thing. He came in with absolutely no idea what had been done. Now, we got to where we were, and, uh, here we are, and we are a little bit late, but I, this is a, an unusual year. Uh, it's been noted, COVID for one has thrown everything off the year before, and we never got the audit done until almost January, February last year. So, you know, we started
Are you gonna add any penalties or anything from the state, or?
No. They pretty much, you know, given everybody extension to a point. They're getting back now that they want everything on the time now, so. Just off a little bit with the audit, we got the treasuries report in, we got the comptroller report in, so all those were done, so.
The, the comptroller report allows a six, a sixty-day extension from the end of October, which was, which was done, so it's been filed down, so you Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
I should want to stay all right.
I want to stay for some, I've started, I'm on this side. Thank you, Lord. I had asked Steve, since this is the twentieth audit report, and my name is on, I was hoping to get a copy. Thank you.
Okay, back to the regular published agenda. The trustee reports, roads and parks. Mr. Hardy?
Oh, just a real quick comment. People are wondering why our new signs aren't up, new road signs, if you will, the speed limit signs, I always call them. It's because the poles haven't come in yet. And we don't know when they're coming in, but we're, Kyle's on top of it, so.
Well, let's see. The board has seven members, seven days in the week. Each one of us took a day, and we stood out there with a sign.
I want the warmest.
That's all, Mr. Wilson.
Alright, thank you. Uh, finance. Mr. Hoffman.
Well, number three, do we want to talk about it now, or when we get into like some of the water and sewer and the other, uh, like the benefits and all that? I've got two pages of notes here.
Okay, which one you want to start with? The, uh, let's go with the easy one, the tax levy ordinance. That one's simple.
Yeah, we just need a, uh, we just need a vote on that, am I correct?
Alright.
We surfaced that, we explained it the last meeting, this is the minutes, and I believe now, uh, with the time interval, it's up for, you know, trustee vote. So do we do that separately now?
Uh, ordinance twenty one dash ten.
Twenty one dash ten.
Okay. We have a motion to approve ordinance twenty one dash ten tax levy ordinance, establishing tax ordinance for fiscal year twenty three. Calendar year twenty two. Alright, we have a motion.
So move Deatley?
Okay, moved by Deatley, seconded by
Sir.
Thor. To approve the tax ordinance twenty one dash ten, the amount of eight hundred and sixty three thousand, four hundred dollars. Be looking for. See, we base that off, that's roughly two point two percent. We are probably gonna be dinged a little bit because the cap is one point four percent this year. Uh, or the C P I is one point four, and they typically stick with the C P I. Might get dinged a little bit.
And it's gonna be a little bit lower too, because, um, this is based on Randy's property that has been disconnected. And so that's not reflected in the, um, assessors' totals.
Oh. Vote and second. Any further comments or questions about it? Not? Roll call please. Mr. Fredo.
Hi.
Mr. Dadley.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so passes. Okay, we have tax levy for next year. Next item, George. Oh, you've got all sorts of ordinances.
The, uh, the first one was with the, uh, I guess, Cork Hill Insurance. That's in the notes there.
Okay, that's the, uh, well, that's not the ordinance, that's the, uh,
No, that's
liability insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, since I'm still new to this, okay, question is, is this, uh, okay, as I read through this and looked at, they're a third-party provider, right? And they will actually provide, you know, access to, let's say, whether you do State Farm, or you do whatever insurance companies, and it would be for both, uh, you know, public works, police, everything, all that, various compensations? Okay, now, did we take a look at that, or did we, uh, let's say, bid it out, but how did we negotiate that? I guess that was the question.
Um, these are, uh, oh, this is everything that we had last year.
So this is just a renewal?
A renewal.
Okay.
Except, um, what's happening, they're saying is that a lot of municipalities are adding on a cyber liability insurance coverage.
I read through that.
Right, so that would be the only addition, and he said that the rates for everything else pretty much are stable
Okay.
from, from last year, or if, if anything, it's just a very small increase.
And I saw that, and, and as I read through, we've tried it risk and some of the others, and you talked about training support, risk and all that with the police force and all, will we be gaining training, support, you know, for the offices and all through that, or are we entitled to that, or is that like a optional? We pay additional for that?
Um, my understanding is that there's all sorts of training that's free to us already?
Yeah, it looks like there's both paper-based and online.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding. Um, anything specifically, you know, that we can sign up for that? I don't know.
Okay, that's my question. I saw that in there, and I saw with risk management, with the police force, with training support and all that. And what we have to, what we, I mean, if we're gonna pay for that and we can gain more out of it, then I think we should, but I want to make sure that we, we use the avenues available.
I know if you look, noticed earlier or later, uh, the chief has the information about Lexapro. And one of the items is utilizing
Yes, I read that.
funds from the I M R F here, not, yeah, the I M R F.
I P R.
I, I P R.
Right, I read through that.
R. Uh, is being used for that, yes. Pick up about twenty five percent of the Lexapro thing he's looking at.
No, I went through a lot of the liabilities, general liability, police liability, building liability, vehicle, I mean, asset liability and all that, and I saw a lot of it was, uh, like a thousand dollar deductible, which I would, and then uh, for the vehicles, as I read on further, it was like replacement value. And I'll get back to that in a second now, but with the buildings and assets, I could understand a thousand dollars. But we had some in there that were, that were listed as assets or whatever, that were only worth like thirteen hundred dollars, and we still had a thousand dollar deductible on it. Is it worth, I mean, having worked with assets and amortization, and when they reach their end-of-life, you know, usage, we don't want to carry anything on them. I mean, I'm looking at it from a business perspective, but we, would, would we want to do that if something's only worth thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, and want to carry it on? I know we need liability in case something happened, but a thousand dollars, we'd probably just be replacing the unit.
Actually, what it is, the lists that are in here are old, and so I have to go in there and figure out what is new and what, and what's already been replaced. So, um, that is an older list that he had in here. With our audit, we were able to identify where our current list of assets are, so, um, like a lot of, a lot of the vehicles and stuff on here have already been removed. So there, you know, vehicles that need to be added for this.
Okay, so saying we might want to do a deep dive in that again at some point, it moves. You might want to do a deep dive in that again, or if you want, I could help you and pick some of them out, or just look, do you want to keep?
What I'm gonna do is I'm going to match, um, I'm gonna contact them and, and have the schedules reflect what we actually have
Okay.
with the current list. Because I, I know that, um, several of these vehicles have been replaced already.
Okay, yeah, I had a number of them here on some of the liabilities, so that was
Yeah.
one question, uh. General liability, when I was going through that, looked like we carry one to three million in general liability. But then, a couple pages later, I saw the umbrella policy, because soon as I saw that, I was wondering if we had an umbrella policy. But our umbrella policy is ten million for the village? Is that, is that sufficient enough, or? I just look at cost today and what lawyer costs are and all that.
One million enough?
Well, one million, you got one million to three million on general liability. Cyber was like two hundred and fifty thousand max. Public officials, you know, meaning us, and then you had associates and all that, were one to two million each. Law enforcement was a million, and I had question mark that and the aggregate of two million. But there, I wondered, are we, are we where the norm is, or are we underinsured? Uh, I don't think we're overinsured. I mean, you look at some of these payouts today for liability, and I know we're a small village. But what would happen if we reached somewhere, court ruled, and it was five million, and we only had one to three? What would happen there? Where, what's the process when that happens? That's what I would have to answer.
I think
That's what your umbrella policy is for, is after you have your hun, hun, one million or two million, whatever it is, your umbrella is for anything that's over, and I would think a ten million liability for one incident probably is good for our ability right now. But that's what the umbrella
But that's what the umbrella policy is for.
And is the ten million per incident or is that an accumulative?
You you know, I would say that's for that incident, that's.
I would think so.
And you know, also what happens is that when when these things go to trial. And you tell the people who are suing you, well, this is what our insurance policy is gonna pay out. So you ask for anything more, you're not gonna get it, you know? And so then there's usually a settlement at that point for whatever the insurance will pay out.
In most cases, unless you hate to say it, it's a, it's a death or something like that, then the sky's the limit. And you never know what's gonna happen. And courts today are so sympathetic. Once to the plaintiff, I shouldn't say stuff like that, but uh, but now that's why I just wanna, you know, and again, since it's my first blush with that. I figured I'd ask, you know, since I saw a lot. And the cyber one was another one I came up with and it was two hundred fifty thousand. Now, does that cover also uh, if, what do you call that when they lock you out? Ransomware, cause I know a lot of villages, even some locally, I mean, here in Chicagoland area, have actually gotten hit and have paid. And paid some pretty substantial, I mean, I don't know if it's two hundred and fifty thousand, but I know just on the books that I've read that they paid.
Which doesn't guarantee anything when you pay.
Exactly, but does that cover that too or?
It's my understanding that it does. And usually my understanding also with the ransomware people is that they know how much to ask for. So.
They're watching us.
Yeah. They they know how much to ask for that they, that they know that they can get away, they're not gonna ask us for ten million dollars, you know?
Okay.
Based on on what we have, they would ask us something that, you know. It it would be cheaper for us to pay than to fight.
Okay. And auto, one of the things on auto there, it said one million each occurrence, that seems like a lot. I mean, a lot, I mean, that that seems adequate. But with that also, my question there was gonna ask come under the umbrella policy too, okay? And then in medical, I saw it was five thousand dollars each incident. Isn't that kind of low for medical?
Standard.
Standard?
It's it's. And again, that's why we have the umbrella policy.
Okay. And then I saw the actual cash value of the autos. And my question there was, you know, well, how do they determine that now, if you have a newer vehicle now? I don't know how it works with police, I know I've seen a lot of police vehicles auctioned off over the years. And you know, know what they're, the wholesale, what they went for wholesale based on the mileage and all that. But how do they determine the cash value of a, of a operating police vehicle or if it's in an accident or something like that? Do they determine it depreciate the same as a standard car? They would?
They do and then they.
They would deviate.
They also have to include all the equipment that goes in the squad car. Which, that's why it's important to have an accurate list of all the equipment that you have in there so that if you do have to file a claim, everything gets replaced, that the village is made whole of your crash.
Okay. Uh, the umbrella, you answered the. Question about that. Uh, pollution, I think, yeah, the question I had there, you know, being familiar with a lot of environmental stuff. From, you know, the automotive end and especially underground storage tanks, USTs and all that. Uh, do we have any USTs in in the village, any or?
Underground, not anymore.
No, okay, so that limits a lot of liability, a lot. And I know there was a uh recommendation on my company head to to get. Uh. Tanks probably for, you know, police department, which I'm just saying, I just looked at a uh. Analysis of gas in the Chicagoland area. Uh, over the last, I think it was sixty days and wow, it was cra- it was graphed out. And I looked at it and then you look at, I think, a place, Woodmans is like the lowest around, but you gotta be cautious when you get there, I guess. But I mean, their prices are below three dollars right now and yet others for regular eighty-seven, uh, as high as, you know. Three fifty, three sixty a gallon, depending where you are in the Chicagoland. And uh, you know, with what they're doing now. With opening up the reserves and all that, I mean, that's just a joke, I mean, it's not enough to sustain, sustain one day's worth of, worth of fuel and they're opening up the reserves. But uh, uh, they say gas prices may come down, you know, based on, you know, the price of oil, but uh, I don't know. That's something that we definitely have better look at and I think it could save a lot of money, I mean. When I was looking at our costs and some of the others, I mean, especially this month's, the cost, you know. Ten cents or forty cents a gallon would make a big impact, especially over some time, so definitely might be a good idea to explore, you know, bulk. Especially if you can buy futures too, I love.
That's behind my.
I was just, I'm not sure where. I just thought it was rather interesting looking at the auto schedule, they still have that ninety-six crease in there.
I saw that, I saw a couple of things in there.
Twenty-one Ford Explorer costs is fifty-one thousand.
And we have an ATF, where's the ATF and there's one other thing, where's that ATF at? In a barn back here?
Yeah.
In it?
It's right here, right next door, right next door.
Right, is it, did it use it?
We we use it for the, for the July, we use it.
Oh, you do?
Actually, we use it for Halloween.
Halloween, fourth of July, every once in a while, an officer will take it on down the trail. Forest Reserve.
Or if we have to get into the bird sanctuary or something, or it's a good, good vehicle to have.
And then uh, the public risk fund, I didn't see anything there. Uh, I just looked at some things there. And then the last was, and I won't say anymore, I'll leave this, I don't know if this is left up to Joe or what, but the water and sewer. And I looked at the cost there, both the uh, the high and the lows and, you know, budgeted there, so, you know, I guess we'll find out more about that. Other than that, I probably said too much, but just wanted to get a understanding.
Uh, we need a vote on the liability insurance?
No, what we, well, what we need to vote is do we wanna add the cyber liability insurance to the policy? Cost is. Twenty-eight seventy-two.
For two hundred fifty thousand dollars? Is this a part beyond what Mr. uh, this payroll covers for us?
I don't know what he covers for us and I'm not.
Do we have a detailed. Outline or synopsis of what they actually do for us and provide? Cause I saw he takes care of not East Dundee, but the Eastern D Fire Department, he takes care of Rutland Fire Department, us and West Dundee, correct? And what?
And Maryton.
So, oh, it's South Barrington, that's right. And in fact, I've got a uh. You know, when I saw that, that's right, cause I knew somebody very well in South Barrington, so it's them how they do. In fact, I'll call them tomorrow. But uh, you know, what do we, is there a breakdown of everything that they give us?
Um, the agreement was from twenty thirteen or something.
Handshake?
It's a handshake, yeah. Yeah, there there needs to be detail after that.
Yeah, I would say, can we, could we ask them or want me to do it? I mean, I I'll gladly send them a note and say, hey, could we get a detailed outline of everything that's provided to us as part of our funding?
I think that's uh, part of our overall conversation with West Dundee that is under the quote sewer unquote.
Eddie? So do I hold off then in doing anything there?
Right.
I don't like starting a pot up.
Well, we're still working through that demand letter from theirs last year.
And yet, we've got no response on what we owe them still on cost, right? So this is four months going?
This is four months going, they not billed us. So, you know, but yeah, we've got uh, sewer situation with their demand letter and the uh, computer issue. It's all wrapped up there with West Dundee. And that is one of the things we want is a more detailed and structured agreement with them on IT services.
Even if it's only two pages and outlines each specific area, I mean, gotta have something.
The last one was half dozen paragraphs.
Do you mind if I approach somebody that I know in South Barrington and ask if they've got anything in writing?
Uh, you can, but I uh, we've got, uh, they've made the same offer to the South Barrington at the same time they did to us.
Yeah, I know one of the people filling in over there right now, it's a friend of mine.
They've got the same kind of agreement uh, we have with them.
Okay.
It it was pretty much a handshake deal. Uh, but uh, it does need to be memorialized a little bit better.
If we're paying any kind of funding, especially on a monthly basis and yearly basis and we have a thing, it's got to, it's definitely gotta be some kind of contractual issue in place. Yep. At least that's the way I look at it.
We have to know what we're paying for?
Yes.
Uh, twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents a year.
Yeah, twenty-eight seventy-two.
A year for twenty-five hundred thousand?
How much we pay?
It'd be twenty-eight dollars a year, of twenty-eight, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Two thousand.
Is that a year or is that a?
Two hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Yeah.
Three K, three K.
Should I have a question, just to understand one thing on here? Uh, I'm looking at page fifty of the packet and uh. It talks about uh, lists all different buildings and so forth. So here it's listing uh, the software house, amount sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the deductible is a thousand dollars. So what, what's the amount sixty-five thousand five sixty-four?
That's replacement value.
Totally, but that's us, so and our duck was a thousand dollars. So would that help us at all if there was structural damage to the roof that that could be filed as a claim? To help us repair uh, uh, re-roof the building?
Uh. If a thunder or a lightning bolt were to strike it, maybe. But to go out there now and just say it's twenty-five years of wear and tear on the roof.
Right.
What about wind damage?
They'll they'll take our thousand dollars and we'll pay another twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Right. My my way of speaking, Anthony, when I was the building trustee, we had a hail damage and Barb Deadred looked at the roof. And Ellen was still finance director and she said at that time our roof was fully depreciated, so. And we don't have any depreciation covered in there, so it, it basically would not cover any, our insurance would not cover any storm damage anymore. And that was, how long was Ellen going on, Steve?
Three years?
Yeah, so that was it three years ago, so. I think.
Okay, on the question of cybersecurity, do we want to add that to the insurance?
I have one other question, um, does um. Uh, does West Dundee, do they maintain their own insurance for this? In other words, so I mean, if 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 we get whacked with ransomware, I mean, are they? Are they insured to deal with that as well or? So the two things, it's that, the other part is, is 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 what technical measures are they taking to help prevent the uh, these kinds of attacks? Which we don't know, do we?
Oh, well, we got the dual, the dual uh, identification quality thing or whatever it was to.
Multi-factor authentication?
Yeah.
I feel better already.
That was a quick one. Uh, I, he's done things like that, I don't know what else is is in there.
So we better do our.
Better, yeah.
We better handle our own stuff and, yeah, waiting, waiting for them to do anything is probably a bad idea.
So then maybe we should add this to the uh. Insurance. Cybersecurity addition.
Good idea. I'd like to make a motion that we add cybersecurity for to our policy for the cost of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Thorn to add cyber liability insurance coverage to our current policy in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars per year. For the comments, questions or discussion?
Are are those, are those uh, costs in our current budget somewhere? That state uh, insurance is a broken down? So, you know, if we're gonna vote on that, adding something in, that would take effect. In January?
I, yeah, this, it'll take, uh, affect January first.
Twelve thirty-one to twelve thirty-one.
And since we already have an approved budget for the next. Year.
This is where we always get tricky, cause we have to anticipate an in- uh, increase.
Right.
Cause we'll be putting budget together in February, March, we don't know until next December what's gonna happen.
Right.
This, this is a situation we've caught in on every year.
Do do we uh. In that budget line, do we? Add, do we, do we anticipate some and do we add some dollars into that when we look at that uh, line? So that we're somewhat covered?
Historically, we try.
Right. Okay.
And and even if it's over, you know, or, you know, we end up going over, we'll get the money from a different place, but then we have to just budget appropriately in that, you know, the following year.
That's, that's always an issue when you're dealing with a county year and a fiscal year. Okay, moved and seconded to add the cyber liability insurance coverage. Uh, no further comments, questions, roll call please. Mr. Prado.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thorn.
Hi.
Mr. Daddling.
Hi.
Mr. Hurney.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, some passes, alright, uh, next one, George?
No, the next uh, was just water and sewer and I'm gonna pass on that till uh. Joe goes over.
Okay.
With the cost.
Alright.
And timeframes and things like that.
Okay. Uh, and then the uh, rates for the employee HMO policy, that's just a pass-through to the employees that may be interested. There's nothing there for us to see the night.
And we went with the one that was highlighted in blue, correct? When you sent me the data for the employees?
Yeah.
Blue cross.
Blue cross.
PPO or whatever, or HMO or.
Yeah.
The first one, the first column. No, I had no questions on that. Any else? I guess we're gonna uh. The Illinois Public Risk Fund. Information that was on that, that's in here.
I believe it's all part of the, yeah, the same.
Okay, there's, there was a, there was a grant in there for two thousand dollars, wasn't it? Will we apply for that?
Yeah, well, it's the grant fund we use to uh, pay off some of the Lexapro bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think because you got to twenty twenty-three to apply for that and obtain it. Okay.
And it's not competitive, so. Basically just send them the invoice and they. Three versus twenty-five percent of it.
Health insurance, we, well, we just talked about that. Do they offer, I did, one thing I was looking at that, Eugene, I saw the HSA, but did they offer an FSA with that too or?
That I don't know. You know, usually that kind of stuff is flexible on spending account.
HSA is, if you have a high, if you have a high uh. What is it, a cost uh, health with a high deductible, if you have a very high deduct, low-cost, high deductible plan. Whereas FSA, flexible spending account, you can take X amount out a year. And you can use it for medical, you can use it for over-the-counter, a lot of over-the-counter drugs, if you buy certain. Equipment or even if you have a baby and certain stuff, you know, that can be all be applied. Problem is, once you deducted, once it's deducted, you have to use it. And if you don't spend it all within the fiscal year, like if you take two thousand dollars out for the year, at the end of the year, you've only used eighteen hundred. You, that other two hundred goes to the employer. But there are a lot of benefits to it, it's, you know, pre-tax and it makes a big difference.
That's what my understanding is, is that it's all included.
Okay, it is, okay, I must have missed it, I didn't see that. Anything else, George? No, I think we didn't do the water and sewer, that was enough, as long as, he doesn't send me something like this again.
Okay, thank you.
Do you uh, cover the ordinance twenty-one dash eleven under finance in the agenda order to be legal or can we defer that later on, Mark?
Or defer that over to the water and sewer?
We're gonna, okay.
That's what he just did, Joe, he voted it down to you.
Slap. Should I have spoken about?
I think Mark is muted.
Mark, you're muted.
There we go. Uh, it's listed for an action item, that's the most important thing. If it's deferred till later in the agenda, that's okay.
Okay. Okay, George is done with finance. Joe, it's you, water and sewer.
Uh, go ahead and move to. Mending the provisions of water and sewer regulations that Mark and I have been working on, that we approved. To have him work on to basically cover the liability of the village for. The various infrastructure, then he also cleaned up some other verbiage in there for some stuff that was no longer needed, so.
We have a motion to refer ordinance twenty one, twenty, or twenty one dash eleven?
But I just did.
Oh, okay. Did I hear a second?
This is the improvement to the uh, water and sewer, where we're spelling it out, who would be responsible for what if the box is on?
Okay, moved by Nimitz, seconded by Hoffman to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven. Mending the sewer and water regulation, maintenance and repair of components of the village-owned system.
Where, where is the ordinance in the package?
Page seven, uh, twenty eight.
Yeah, twenty eight. Thank you.
Any comments, questions or discussion regarding this?
So, so this is where if, if something is in the village, right away, the resident has. Placed there from a landscaping perspective, or, and we have to go in and repair. The cost of replacing that is the homeowner's responsibility. Not, not, obviously not the village, and we have a right as a village, because it is on, on uh. On those property to go in and do the repair. So, I know that when we.
In some situations, this was being written because we have places. Where water buffalo boxes are under driveways.
Right.
It's not village property.
Or sewer tanks underneath decks that may or may not have gotten a building permit.
Yeah, the one was a deck that we talked about previously.
Always village property we're contending.
Okay, so if, so my question would be that. If we approve this ordinance, I know that. Ordinances are available for residents to access through the village website, or if it's posted. But on this particular one, would there be any value in perhaps uh. You know, when the water bill goes out again, to add something to that mailing. To alert all residents, some may be affected, probably a majority are not affected. Uh, and I only mention that because if. You know, the winter time's coming and, and if, if something were to happen, and the resident all of a sudden wakes up one day. You know, class teams over there digging, because we gotta fix something, they wake up and say, hey, what are you doing? It just might be a way to uh. Let them know that this has been passed.
Wendy can add a small blurb to the bill, but if, there's a separate sheet of paper that has to go in with the bill, it's at least five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we do put this, all resolutions or ordinances are published in the uh, newsletter. And they are placed on the bulletin board in the village home. So. Whenever the newsletter comes out, there's a section that says, what resolution, what ordinance has been passed.
You know, someone wants to do a special article.
And I don't think too many people are gonna argue with us when we're trying to restore water.
Right.
Or unplug a sewer system.
Right.
We'll wait till we're done.
Right.
At least I would. Okay, no further comments, questions or discussion on ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven. There may be no others, let's have a roll call please. Mr. Brando.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Hurney.
Hi.
Mr. Thorn.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, so passes. Okay. Joe?
Uh, this is all, Mr. Steel provided a presentation for us, or talk about the, the. Water mason project that he's recommending, so I will yield my time to him, I believe. He had asked if he could share his screen, because he had some other maps or things he wanted to share with us, so I'll leave that to Mr. Florence and Mr.
Uh, I wasn't able to get that done. It ended up being too complicated, so I just, it's easier to just talk about it, so. Uh, but, yeah, as Joe mentioned, is uh, in the packet is, there's a letter basically stating, um. As you guys know, is uh, Kyle does a great job as far as repairing all the breaks that happen. However, it's getting very costly for public works, and obviously, right now, I think Kyle, it's seventy five thousand dollars. Approximation that you spend every year on repairs, about?
Yeah, give or take, I mean, the audit, I just looked it up on their, their final cost for the year was sixty eight thousand.
Yeah, so, obviously, is, all you're doing is basically repairing a crack and a hole here and there, and. It's only gonna get worse and worse as time goes on. Uh, just alone is. Uh, Kyle had marked up a map for me, and Hillcrest on itself, just over the last couple of years. I mean, it's had a dozen breaks on it just alone. Uh, that's just a short portion of water main throughout the town. Um, so basically, is what, working with Kyle, is we've kind of narrowed down just the worst sections in town. Again, this isn't an all standing list, is eventually is all water main needs to be replaced. Uh, it's been rumored that the water main in the town is actually uh, recycled water main, which basically means that it was taken out of the ground. Of another project and put into placement into the village, so. Uh, while it might have been good at the time, is just over time, is all water main breaks, and it becomes corroded. Uh, Kyle's had instances where basically is there's six feet of pipe that's completely corroded, you know, you touch it and it falls apart. Falls apart, so obviously, that's in the area of Hillcrest and other portions of the village. So you can only imagine what's elsewhere in the village itself. Uh, we're working with Kyle, is we've kind of narrowed down just a short-term list of the most dire places that need water main replacement. Uh, just doing a quick cost estimation, you can see the list, that's included in the packet, along with a map of those locations. That, uh, in a perfect world, would be anywhere from two point four five million to three point seven two, or two seven million. Again, uh, perfect world, meaning that we'd have a straight shot, there's no other utilities, no other complications in the way, however. Uh, given just, for instance, on Hillcrest alone, is. You have the existing water main on one side, and you have the sanitary sewer on the other side of the road. So it's gonna be very difficult as far as trying to replace that water main and actually get a location for that, so that'll drive up the cost. Uh, that could drive up the cost anywhere between twenty five and fifty percent in that area, but again, that'd be a worst-case scenario. Um, there has been talk about, uh, as far as funding, obviously, it's a large cost for the village to front, cost-wise. Because uh, that, uh, two point four five to three point two seven million doesn't even include the engineering design. Or the construction inspection on that, nor does it include contingency in case something else happens. And obviously, you want a contingency in case the bids come in high. Um, there has been talk about doing a bank loan, um. Hopefully, you may be getting grants, or maybe even using some of the money that we've received over the last couple of years, uh, to help with that. Uh, one idea that was brought up was, the EPA has loans, uh, that they give out every year. Uh, currently, just to give you an idea, as far as the rates on that, is they set a rate each year. And right now, the rate is at one point one one percent. Uh, they do that through the state revolving fund. Um, they have really two loans through that, is one for wastewater and storm sewer. And the other is for public water supply. Uh, the one that you'd be looking at would be for the public water supply. Uh, I won't go into huge detail as far as everything, just because it's kind of spelled out in the letter itself. But you can see that it is a very lengthy process. Um, it's not very difficult, but it's just. Lengthy as far as the amount of information that you have to supply the EPA and everything. Uh, as far as timing on that project. Is, it's kind of broken up into two uh, separate sections. One is uh. The intended funding list, which is basically the first half year of the project, uh, funding. Second is, is what's called a uh. Forgot what it is, a bypass period. So basically, is you can still kind of get on that list during the second half, if other funds become available. Um, timing-wise is, basically, the project runs with the state fiscal year, which is from uh. July first through June thirtieth. Um, they want projects and any funding. Uh, applications submitted by March of that year, uh, of a year. And then from that March is, they uh, award. They basically look through all the applications and determine which ones are actually going to get the funding. So even though you might actually submit an application, which includes uh, both plans, funding list. Um, uh, basically, the state village's commitment towards doing that project. Is you might not even actually get the loan process. Uh, just to give you an idea, as far as uh. The schedule, if the village wanted to proceed with this right off the bat, is. Quickest that you'd be able to actually get in a project into the EPA would be March thirty first of twenty twenty three. So, uh, with that low rate, actually comes just a delayed process as far as getting that completed, which means. Uh, that the project wouldn't even be bid until April fifteenth of twenty twenty four. So, uh, you can imagine that's a long period of time to wait, however, obviously, you're getting the cheaper money on that. Um, as far as scheduling-wise on our end is. Uh, typically, plans can take anywhere between four and six months. Uh, that also includes basically uh, submitting to EPA, uh, getting all the required other permits from it. So that can kind of set kind of the base as far as what needs to be done. And then from that is, you can decide whether you want to actually go through with EPA uh, funds, uh, grant funds. Or go through a bank loan, so forth and so on, kind of like what we did for the water main project. Um, I've kind of thrown a lot at you at the moment, but uh, it's kind of all spelled out, I guess, in the letter. Um, is there any questions immediately in regards to what information's on the letter, or what I've said? Obviously, I've thrown a lot at you right now.
Jeff, you could speak, the one thing you said to me a couple of times, which really hit home, was the, if there were to be a catastrophic failure of the water main. The impact it would have on the entire village and the ensuing.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was gonna get to that, I just want to make sure if any questions on the, on the funding or anything like that at the moment. I know Eugene has a lot of ideas also in regards to the funding too, but. Uh, I kind of narrowed it down into the EPA, because that's kind of section that I work on, at least far as help out in the uh. The uh, application process, so it'd be mostly, uh, Eugene obviously has a lot more uh, funding options that we can do too. So.
Just to give you an idea of, of the costs, um, right now, we're paying about ten thousand dollars a month in interest for, for. Principal and interest for our current loan. The project at the max of, you know, three point two seven million. But with a twenty-year loan at the one point one percent rate is, is over fifteen thousand dollars a month. In addition to the ten thousand we're already paying.
What is it, what is the current loan get paid off, Eugene?
Twenty four, November twenty four.
That was one of my questions to Jeff, uh. You're saying that we need to submit a plan by March thirty first of twenty twenty three?
Yeah, that's the soonest that you can actually get it, because the uh, applications, they want submitted by March thirty first of the fiscal year. So basically, for this year, it would have been the first, March thirty first, and the next one would be March thirty first of twenty twenty two. Uh, however, there is not enough time to actually create a plan set, uh, get approvals, because. With the EPA loans is, you also have to get write-off from Ike, uh, the EPA, um, Army Corps. Uh, FEMA, everybody, you have to get a write-off then. So that's why I'm basically saying March thirty first of twenty twenty three, it'd be the set period.
I was just looking at, because, you know, we've got nothing in this year's budget. Plan for any type of engineering. Uh, we've got, you know, Joe, you, you don't have any money in, in savings at all.
No, that, that's why. Excuse me, uh, me next year's budget, and um, I know Brian had worked out, getting some numbers to try and bump up the funding to do this, so. Yeah, we're definitely looking at next fiscal year, possibly even the fiscal year after that to, to cover this. So we're looking at one to two years down the line before we can even submit anything, so.
That's what I was gonna, because we need to spend some budget time on this.
Well, that's why we're having this conversation now, so we can, you know, we, we, we talked about it earlier in the swing, and we, we've done nothing, we just, you know, so.
Well, yeah, we need to maintain the, the water system, that's for sure. We know that all the, the old part of the system over here is questionable. Uh, you and I went, Joe, went through this twenty years ago with the pigging issue.
Right, and that's what I, you know, and maybe Jeff could speak to that, that time we had Joe Hines. Uh, looking at it, said, all these pipes need to be replaced, remember that, looking at, the pipes are just rotting away as they run the.
Right.
It's, they gotta replace it as soon as possible, and we've, you know. And, and what's your favorite expression, Steve? We've kicked the can down the road, we keep kicking it down the road, but, you know, and Jeff, you wanna speak to, you know.
Never brought that can.
I know, Val said the other day that he has, he's deferring maintenance on at least, was it, Kyle, did you say ten valves? That are either stuck on, stuck off, or stuck in some position, we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we, I don't remember the exact situation happened, you had a. Water, uh, water main break up by the pool or by the school, and you shut valves off, and people on uh, Hillcrest Parkway lost their water.
Yes.
Yeah, there are numerous valves that are stuck in on-off positions. Um, mostly because obviously, we haven't been able to replace them, and some of those valves, we actually don't even know exist. Until actually Kyle starts trying to shut everything off, and next thing you know, half the town is shut off, so. A lot of this would obviously uh, remedy some of that situation, at least in the lower part of town, is. Uh, everything can be done a brand-new system. Um, there's also been uh, issues of water pressure throughout the village. Uh, mostly because either uh, a pipe's leaking, or a valve stuck in half off, half on. Or there's a complete valve that's completely shut off, so a lot of that would solve that issues. Um, again, is uh, just kind of throwing all these costs out there, just get the board and ideally, as far as what this is gonna cost you. And at least time-wise too, because uh, again, is the longer that we wait, is more. Things that Kyle is gonna end up having to repair, and obviously, costs aren't getting any cheaper as far as uh. Contracting anybody out, because on a lot of these is Kyle can't even do himself with public works, so.
Uh, Jeff, let me throw this at you, we've had a conversation just earlier this fall, uh, locusts. Well, the southern part up there, where is that, Acorn?
Yeah, that, yeah, that, I was gonna mention that, is, is that can actually be uh, kind of deferred further down the line. Is, we were just kind of throwing that in there, just because some of that line is actually in bad condition. Uh, some of it's more new, um, obviously, once you start get going. Is, it's cheaper to replace it all, rather than doing little sections here, little sections there, so.
If we're gonna run locust, wouldn't it make sense to just do it all at once, rather than do the road, then do the water, then do the sewer?
Yeah. Yep.
Put all three of those and just went into that section?
Yeah, and just completely tore it up, yeah.
The other thing I, I think should be considered in this also, if we're gonna do it. We got a half a dozen residents right there on Elm Court that are still on wells. Why don't we wrap up all these loose uh, well residents? well residents we have and get them on the system to help contribute to the payment of the overall thing?
Yeah, that was just, this was just for the replacement of it. Obviously, since when everything kind of went out in regards to the determining who wanted to actually have wells and who wanted to go on to well and who wanted to go on to water is is I believe that there wasn't a big hoopla for anybody wanting to actually go on to village water. But obviously with that little short section is that could also be included on there. Again, this was just mostly for replacement costs, those that were in dire need of replacement.
I was just thinking, we're in the area doing something.
Exactly. Yeah, if you really wanted to do that, yeah.
The other you could speak to that, that you spoke to me a couple of times about that made a lot of sense is why financially it makes more sense to spend the money and do the one big project as opposed to breaking it up into two or three or four smaller projects.
Yeah, so basically is, obviously when you guys know, obviously, had any road projects or actually any water main replacement, when was that, two thousand, when was the last big one, two thousand fourteen? Is, uh, there was a lot of disturbance as far as, uh, both disturbance in road construction, traffic and also turning the water, turning the water on, turning the water off. And then basically is, on that project is, everything was kind of everywhere around town. If you do short little projects here and there is, you're gonna have a lot more disturbance. With that also is you're turning on valves, turning off valves, turning on valves, turning off valves, which cause pressure fluctuations throughout the whole system, which has a risk of actually breaking more pipes. Whereas if you're doing one large project is you're able to actually just kind of shut down one section and then go all the way to the other, because the old pipe is actually going to still be in complete use. And the only reason why you'd end up having to turn it on and turn it off is if there's a break or when we're actually switching the system from the old one to the new, new one. Another reason why it's nicer to do one project all at once is basically you only have the disturbance of the construction crew coming in at one time. With that is we get lower costs because the construction crew knows, hey, I'm only gonna be there for one year rather than coming in two or three years at a time. So basically, as they're able to set down their equipment and just go, is there's no reason to switch from one section to the other section to the other section. Also is doing one project at an earlier time is it kind of locks us into cheaper prices. Because we all know that nothing's gonna end up getting cheaper other than asphalt for some unknown reason, but.
That's gonna go the other way now that we've been talking about it.
Failure, say the worst case scenario that, you know, on Friday afternoon or that, or what the potential would be for water pressure in the village.
Yeah, so, um, uh, it's kind of a joke is on construction of water main is you never want to be doing work on a Friday afternoon, just because that's when something bad always happens. No matter what it is, a water main will break, water service will break. And of course, is it's at the worst opportune time, uh, which means doing everything in the dark. Which means that everybody's coming home from work and it just causes a large disruption that way. Also, given how the pipes are, is at any time is uh, right now, there could be a large break. I think I mentioned is Kyle's basically uncovered some pipe that, I mean, you touch it and it's falling apart and he's replacing full sections at a time. So doing that on a Friday afternoon or, or a weekend is now you're gonna have disturbance throughout the whole weekend, uh, which basically means putting every resident that's affected on a boil order. Given how the valves are in the area is large sections of town could be shut down at a time. Which means that the boil order would end up having to be for weeks on end, which obviously would be a lot of disturbance for the residents in town.
Yeah, I like the idea of cheap money, but I don't think this is a time when we can put that off that long and wait that long. I mean, one point one percent from EPA is great, but I don't think we can wait three to four years in order to make something happen. So I think we have to come up with a plan and try to move forward just to get something going as soon as possible. Because I don't want to have a catastrophic water failure in the village, because it's not, it's gonna affect that part of town. It's gonna affect everybody in town. So, you know, I think we have to look at the costs and get the different options on
What?
Like cost us and what we can do to get something started. We need to do that.
Either way, what's good as far as timing wise is if you wait until the next budget to actually fund for the engineering is, no matter what, the engineering needs to get done. During the engineering is we can actually make the contract books. Because the, the way that water main is, is any contract that you make is going to be good. Water main isn't changing all that much. Type of pipe that you use isn't changing. The methods that are used aren't changing or aren't gonna change that drastically in the next couple of years. So any plan that you actually do can sit on the shelf for a year or two while you're determining how the funds are actually going to be. In that time is also you can get an idea at least as far as survey work needs to be done. You can take that section if all of a sudden magically is you have two hundred thousand dollars that you can spend uh, on a section is you can go ahead and instantly just change around the plans a little bit. And also the contract book a little bit and actually get that project out the door right away. You know, rather than actually having to wait on doing three years down the line is at least you'll have a plan all set and ready on what sections that you're gonna be doing.
One of the things that I was talking to Joe about is that maybe what we should do is just do all of the construction engineering first, get it all done. And then if grants pop up, then we've already had it done. And apply for that grant and get it done. And we can just do the project in sections. While, you know, you know, Jeff says that it's gonna be a least amount of disruption or whatever. It's not gonna affect the entire village all at once. You know, yes, it may be cheaper for the for the guys who are doing the work to be here and stuff like that. They're not gonna be working at the, in, in the entire village at the same time. So it's only gonna be a section at a time. So whether we do it a section at a time or we do the entire village, it's still gonna be just a section at a time.
Right.
Eugene, I think from, and I, I hate this, you know, six months ago when it came on, whatever it was in June. You know, we were talking about this. We mentioned it and said, and, and, you know, today, you know, we've got some kind of feasible, you know, analysis on paper right now, but we're still talking about it. And to me, talk's cheap. I mean, that's just the way I was, was in business, you know, just gotta, we can't be sitting here talking about this six months from now. You know, I, I'd like to see a, see some kind of a concrete plan put in place that forget about doing a whole damn thing. You know, I mean, look, it's pretty much a U and you got one big section on locust. Why don't we decide if we have to, locust is a heavily traveled area. I mean, I don't know if we benefit from that at first or what, but it also connects to all the other ones. You know, come up with some kind of a, a plan and, and even if we gotta do a referendum to get some of the funding. I mean, I don't know how available, I was gonna say our grants available, but I don't know how available they're gonna be. You know, we don't have, we've got the two hundred thousand dollars set aside, I think from COVID that we might be able to use for that. But, but you know, let's, let's put something on paper that, that we can adhere to and go forward. You know, and at least get some budget. So, I, I mean, when they're saying twenty twenty four, I'm looking, holy crap, this is crazy. I mean, you could, you could build a, you could build one of the towers in Chicago in that, I mean, in that time. And have it occupied. But I mean, and I'm just saying, maybe I'm just frustrated because I don't know the municipal processes and I'm used to others. But wow, I just can't see talking about it six months from now and not still having anything concrete in place. So I, I think we gotta move forward and do something.
Eugene, would it be possible, I know Brian, it was a transition and Brian had done a bunch of number crunching and figured it out. For the January meeting, you know, first or second meeting, can you crunch some numbers about when the current loan will be paid off? And, and we had talked about
Paying off November, November twenty twenty four.
What? You know, maybe we're, we talked about rolling the loan fee into the demand fee and I know Brian had calculated some numbers. He figured out that, you know, he was thinking our demand fee really should be thirty five dollars. So you want to crunch some numbers and figure out what various demand fees would look like next year? And how much money they're gonna get us as far as the engineering and possible loans and
That ten dollars is not gonna bring us to fifteen thousand dollars to, to pay the loan.
I, that's what I'm saying. Let's put this all down and figure out how much we have to charge the residents and how much we add to the, the demand fee and do something. And that just seems like a good place to start is we, we gotta dig for money, so.
We need any kind of a water, like fee, a one-time water fee to residents to come up with like, oh, twenty five, fifty dollars, you know, to support infrastructure rebuilds or something like that?
Well, that's what Joe's talking about, raising the demand fee, which we've taken from seven dollars and fifty cents a month to twenty five dollars a month. Now he's wanting to move to thirty five dollars a month.
I didn't necessarily say I'll do that. That's what Brian had recommended. He, you know, because the problem is we've never, we've depreciated our, we kind of found wrong in my language here. We've depreciated the water system on the books, but we've actually never
We never banked the appreciation.
It's fourteen dollars a month that you'd have to add.
Okay.
Well, just for the long.
Friday night, I saw plenty of people at Dickens on D, on D spending three or four dollars for a bottle of water. I mean, come on.
Yeah, well, that's until they get the bill from the village.
Right, yeah, I know. But they didn't realize it's been quadrupled that during the month of bottled water.
If you are looking to split up the project into sections is Hillcrest, all the way from Hillcrest basically to Bullfrog. I mean, you could go even actually a little bit further would be number one on that list. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, on that, would that would be your recommend?
Hillcrest would be priority number one if you were to split it up.
But if we're doing locust, wouldn't you want to do locust first then?
No, I don't want to do Hillcrest first. Hillcrest is in more shape.
But you can't tear up, you can't lay down a locust and then Yeah, tear it up.
Do you want to do the fight, pave the locust this path next year and then come back the next year, tear it up with pipe?
All I know
That's just
Ninety-five percent of our main breaks aren't in Hillcrest.
Yeah, and I don't think the, from talking to Jeff Steele on that, he was talking about the fact that the locust, the, the main is not down the center of the road. So I mean, the machinery, but it wouldn't necessarily be pouring up to put infrastructure in.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that is, so basically is the water main on locust is actually in the right of way. Basically, the grass area alongside the road. Uh, the only thing that would really tear up that road would be any kind of equipment that's actually running up and down it. To give you an idea, as far as the wear and tear that's been on the road is, uh, think of Bull Brummo when we did that. When was that, two thousand, two thousand eight?
Yeah, but any construction cup, any construction equipment on our asphalt road is gonna stress.
Yeah, yeah.
And if it's a brand new road, that's obviously if we're gonna put the money in it, I just assume get the water on the ground, get their equipment out, then pave the road and be out of there. I know it's not under the road, but there's still gonna be tractors, there's gonna be trailers, there's gonna be dump trucks.
It all depends too on
Crawling up and down that whole thing.
What stage, so if you're gonna do it in stages. Well, I recommend Hillcrest. When it gets to locust, we're talking about a patch. We're not talking about a long section of asphalt. For them to tie it to the existing main. And then if you were to come back and do locust based on your funding, how everyone funded then, then you can worry about the, the whole road itself. But if you were to, I, Jeff, do you remember what the cost of just doing Hillcrest would be?
During, in that worst section is it's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that worst section.
So if that's how you wanted to increment it, I, I would highly recommend doing Hillcrest first. You worry about the asphalt of locust. That's an afterthought, because you're really, I mean, you're only gonna do a patch.
I mean, we're kind of in the kind of head of the horse you're referring, what we do is, is George or Eugene, you want to get together and just crunch out some numbers for January? To look and see what the demand fee is gonna have to be to pay for these
I, I just told you, it's fourteen dollars.
Well, but less, if we didn't do the whole thing.
So it's gonna be less than fourteen dollars.
For the partial?
Right, so, so whatever, so whatever you break it up, you know, that's what it's gonna be. So you know, the max is gonna be fourteen dollars that you have to add. If you're only gonna do a five hundred thousand dollar project, then it's gonna be a third or, you know, a sixth of it or whatever.
So, so I guess, what, I mean, this is the money part. So I mean, we, Jeff Steele has prepared all this. I brought it to the board twice. So it's, what do we, I mean, I'll leave it to you guys. I mean, George, you're the finance guy. It's a, it's a decision about what we I mean, that, that, there's no good answers here. So it's just what, what, uh, how much do we want to increase the demand fee and to pay for it and how much risk are we gonna look at having a, an old system? I mean, that, what do we, what do we want to charge? And that's, that's where it's at now, so.
Man fee, Joe, goes to all the residents. And we're only taking care of a small portion on the east side.
Well, I mean, we did it last time. We did the streets up on Bull Brummo and all that. I mean, traditionally, that's what we've always done, so.
And also, you know, we can't accurately gauge what the charge would be because we don't know what it's gonna cost us to, to loan the money. Because we can't get the one point one percent, so we're gonna have to go to the bank and that's gonna be four percent. So that's gonna
You're the finance director. How would you like to proceed on this?
Well, what he needs is direction from us as to what we're gonna do.
So let, let me throw this out. If, if we, if we increase the demand fee one time in a sense to say, let's use the fourteen dollar just as a figure. Whatever that figure is, if we increased it one time and we only spent a portion of that incremental funds to do Hillcrest, but we're banking it so that the residents get the hit one time. And I understand, you know, I'm in, you know, South, Sleepy Hollow manner, so to speak. So I may not be affected, but yet i- in the village itself, if one area is being improved on, ultimately all areas of that be improved on. But the residents will understand that this additional, let's say fourteen dollars is your, your time will come when your water area main will be repaired as well. We have to start somewhere. But it's, but as a, as compared to saying, let's just do, you know, five dollars per, per resident. And then, you know, two years from now, we have to go to residents again and say, hey, it's another, you know, eight dollars. I would just recommend we do it one time. And if we know that and, and we know this, you know, two to three million dollar number is a pretty big number. But I think that that's, that prevents us from, that, that stops us from kicking the can down the road, as we've mentioned. We're, we're building the fund, we're taking the money in, we're, 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 we're holding on to it. We're doing the key areas as Kyle, with his expertise, he knows that he doesn't want to have to wake up on February first because Hillcrest has fallen apart. So that's my, my idea. And that, yes, we know a bank's gonna have to loan us the money, but we have to say we have to decide now. This is, we're, 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 we're increasing costs now to plan for the future. So if it's four, and, and perhaps, Joe, to your point, you know, if, if Eugene does with, with Brian or, or looks at some other, uh, number that, that the January meeting, we would agree that the demand's gonna be increased by this dollar amount. And, and Jeff and Kyle begin to determine the engineering cost to do the Hillcrest to, to, to Bullfrog area. We go to the bank, we make the loan, we buy the bullet. And, and to, to George's point, we, we, you know, ask her to get off the pot, right? We, we, we say, okay, this is it. And the residents have to understand that it's twenty twenty one and you don't, you, we want you to have water in twenty twenty two, Mr. Moreno. You know, uh, because right now you're not gonna have water in twenty twenty two. So that's my, my thought on it.
I, I just want to give you guys a little bit of perspective. You know, whatever you guys decide, it doesn't matter to me because I'm not the one who's paying the bill every month. Currently, the bill is twenty five dollars a month. My demand charge in Wooddale is five dollars a month.
I did look around though, surrounding towns, the average around here, West Dundee's like twenty two bucks.
But then they give them a a lower rate for.
They have a lower rate of water. They do.
So that's where they're making it off.
West Dundee's rate of water is four dollars and forty one cents. They also make their own water. Gilbert's is five dollars fifty cents. They make their own water. Elgin is five fifty eight. Obviously, we get our water from Elgin. Agonquin is seven dollars and thirty cents and Crystal Lake's five dollars and thirty one cents. But they all do charge a demand fee or a capital improvement fee. They each lay them different.
So we're paying, we're charging half dollar for the water, we're charging half dollar for the demand.
What's our charge for water?
Not making your own water.
Yeah, what's our charge for water?
Uh, wait a minute, we're at.
Eight seventy five.
Yeah.
How much?
Eight seventy five per thousand gallons.
And 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 to to kind of respond to that, I think we have all realized that we're a landlocked community with no retail presence. People elect to live here because of that rural look, or as I coined the phrase, we live in Mayberry. And and, you know, we have, the residents unfortunately have to, would would have to pay more to live the quality of of living that they expect when they move in the Sleepy Hollow. And it 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 probably would, you know, in in recent years, this would, you know, we we tried to do a tax referendum and it gets voted down. But this is something that affects every human being. And and the water goes south, I'm not boiling water, I'll sell the house and I'll move to Arizona. I mean, I'm not gonna stay and boil water for two months. You know, I'm with the jury. But this, this, you know, here's, we're, we're here. This is the eleventh and a half hour. And and, you know, you know, I I would love people to be standing at that door with the sticks on fire complaining that we did something. And we can go right back and say to them, thank us in two years when there are no more water problems. Because nobody comes to this door at all to question what we do, to ask what we do, nobody. And maybe it's time for us to, I mean, really shock the boat and rock the boat. Because otherwise, you know, two years from now, when somebody else is sitting in this position, uh, when when we have the next consolidated election, you know, that person's gonna have to deal with it. And I'm just suggesting him get it done now. And not that.
Suggesting we start the fire and leave.
I'll go on record, I'm not rewriting the twenty twenty.
Start the fires.
He's moving to Arizona, so he won't care.
What, what about instead of tying it to the water system, what about just a special assessment? What's involved with that? Is that a simpler, that's reference to?
Well, I agree with Mr. Steele that the fact that nothing is gonna get cheaper, we know that. It's only gonna continue to grow. So no matter if we make this fee, seven dollars or if we make it fourteen, uh, I'm under the impression I would rather make it more now and hit it one time. That's my opinion. And have it hang like, and since what Anthony said, take that money, if we don't use it, we're banking it to move forward. Because it isn't gonna get any cheaper. So we do it at half, you do it at seven dollars. And then, like I said, another year or two, we're right back in the same situation because prices are gonna continue to escalate as we move along.
Plus we have repair costs.
Right.
Well, given, given that, then do we want to limit that to, I understand there's reasons not to, but limit that to fourteen dollars? Is that really a magic number?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm.
Because I like Anthony's idea.
Throughout fourteen, you know, it's a rough number for us to kind of start thinking about, but certainly.
We gotta figure out what that is.
Let's research, we would, might know better, you know, at a future meet.
At our current rate that we pay St. Charles Bank, it's three point four percent. So we're now talking nineteen thousand dollars a month. So we're talking a seventeen dollar a month.
I I will say that.
For twenty years.
One of the numbers that Brian crunched through is that assuming the majority of the repairs are in the system part where the repair, that right now we're paying about five dollars a month each resident on water for repairs on the system breaks. Which doesn't include the amount of, you know, Jeff and I are talking that we have no idea what the condition of the system is and how much may be leaking in there that we're paying, you know, we're buying water from Elgin, just dumping it into the ground slowly. So the hope is that if we repair the system and do it quickly, then we can hold demand, you know, the demand charge level for, hopefully for a while. And that's the other.
The question I came coming back to here this evening is, uh, Jeff has a proposal for us, and what is it, six point seven percent, Jeff?
Six and a half.
Six and a half percent of the construction cost. Uh, if we're looking at the three point some million, we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we gotta pony up with just to do the engineering.
Jeff, is that all upfront or is that?
That's gonna be pretty much upfront.
No, obviously is depend, obviously we bill, you know, monthly, so. But again, essentially is, you know, you gotta have that money ready and budgeted, so.
Right.
So, so that's the first thing I need to figure out next fiscal year, how we pay for that and budget for the engineering before we can do anything else.
In the end.
I have to tell you this, but we just kicked it another three months.
So as far as when Kyle had marked up the map is, I'm wishing that I would have done it, is basically Hillcrest needs to get done. Uh, that is number one list, just based off the amount of breaks, uh, the amount of disturbance. Uh, just knowing in the past when Art was around is just knowing how many valves that he's actually replaced along that area or that we know are stuck in the on position. And basically, when you shut off water is you can't go to that valve is you gotta go to the next one, which means three or four more houses are shut down. Uh, so to me, that'd be number one priority on everything. Um, secondly is, uh, I know Kyle has had a lot of breaks up around, uh, Windmore, uh, basically right around where Windmore ties into Glen Oak there. Uh, that hill is just constantly being flooded with water and breaks. Uh, there's maybe been like three or four within just the last couple of years I've known of.
That's the neighborhood where Mr. Kopeck resides.
Yes.
I think you all remember Mr. Kopeck from last fall.
George, what are your thoughts? You're the finance guy, do we, we? Jump into this full steam and charge the residents?
Bury me, huh?
Well, I, I, I'm very quiet there, you know, you're way up in the corner.
Well, we gotta go with the, I mean, we've gotta get the funding for the engineering costs first, so. I said we move forward on that and we'll have to do that with the budget, you know, when we start doing the budget next year. Now, can we use for that some of the funding that we have, that two hundred thousand dollars? This is water and sewer.
I don't know, that's a.
Can we find out, how will we find out fairly quickly there? Is that a county or is that state?
Well, we've got two funds. We've got two hundred thousand from the state that we can use for infrastructure, supposedly, yeah. And then we've got the two hundred and twenty from the feds for infrastructure.
So if that's the case, we've got the three hundred and some thousand that we need for the engineering.
If the statutes will allow us to charge that.
But how do we find out and how quickly?
Paul, your state rep or your, whoever helped you get the money?
Stay rep, she wasn't even aware that they were restricted to to sewer and water, which she gave them to us.
Call, well, then the next call would be to I E P A.
Yeah.
Do you have a contact info or?
Uh, it was DECA, the Department of Economic.
Is that where that money came from?
Yes.
I, uh.
You have to request it then?
I know the director of D C E O.
Would he like to come?
We can call again, answer.
There we go. Okay. Cause that was, yeah, uh, Ms. Ness gave us two hundred thousand dollars. And it's, you know, she thought we could use it for everything. And that's when we were gonna redo the roof and salt bar. And we asked about, it came back, it's all about, it had to be water or sewer. Now, well, if we're engineering for a future project, we don't know.
But it's based on water and sewer. So if that's what they told us, then it should be a no brainer. So can we bring her to next meeting?
Sure.
Ask her and see if she'll come and let's get some, and that way, maybe by end of January, we'll be able to say, okay, we can start with the engineering and we've got something going on already. At least we're not sitting here discussing it in three months, right?
Okay.
I mean, that's all the engineering fees right there, then if we tack on fifteen or twenty seven dollars monthly, that can give us, and we just have to communicate to the village. I mean, what's that saying again? I've used it before, educated consumers, your best customer, educate the village, let them know.
Who was it used to say that?
Si Sims.
Yep, yep.
Si Sims.
Uh, Don.
I know I'm usually a public in con, but I like the way you guys are talking, but in my years of sitting on that side, you talk about how you're gonna raise it, we're gonna build this fund. But the next time the police union runs over budget or the assault is over, all this money that we have, we don't restrict it or it's gotta be saved for water. So that's one thing you have to make sure when you're gonna go for the seventeen or whatever. I think you wanna make sure you have a plan, how we're gonna build that, actually build that fund up and keep it in our cash.
Yep, gonna be optimistic, not pessimistic.
Yeah, I agree.
And don't forget, oh, it was general, a hundred and seventy five thousand.
How soon we want to look increasing the, uh, the man rate then to start building up the fun, the funds that we need to start building up since we've kind of made a decision on this?
Based on that, can we, is Mark gonna follow up with the direct that he knows or?
Yeah, Mark. Check with, uh, the director of DECA?
Right, I'll, I'll coordinate that with you, Stefan.
Okay, all right.
Try to do it together.
Mr. President, you're gonna, uh, talk to, what's her name, Susan?
Yes. See what she knows.
She was very open to helping out when I talked to her at that town meeting that time and had a couple of conversations, but for one deficiency, she said she was gonna email me and never email me back, so I don't know how good a follow up is. That was not a good first impression.
That's the first time, and then you gotta blame the IT in West Dundee, they probably should sit out. It's like you can't get, you can't get that. Ed's, Ed's.
Like I go by, you never have a second chance to make a first impression, so.
In, uh, in the meantime, I'll sit down with Kyle and actually see if we can, uh, maybe pinpoint more of the areas that actually need it. Because again, this was just kind of a, uh, area of if we're doing ninety percent of a road is you might as well just do the remaining ten percent. So, uh, we can kind of cut it down at least as far as maybe in some sections. Because again, in sections of Locust is, I know that we wouldn't actually necessarily have to do. However, it'd be nice to do it if, obviously if you're going along in that section rather than have to do little sections here and there.
Okay. So we got some homework to do, chase down some use of funds. And consider moving on to this in January.
Put on the agenda, just put as a old business under the, uh, running item under old business, uh, till we get this sorted out. Just water main replacement, doing that discussion item.
Tony, yep. Old business until it's sorted out. Okay, anything else, Joe?
No, I, I deal the floor, so it's up to Jeff.
That is it.
All right, Jeff and Joe.
I'm sure.
That's enough for water and sewer this evening.
Say, if you guys ever have any questions about, uh, I know there's a lot of information in that letter. Uh, and also a lot of information's been thrown out there, so if you have any questions, any of y'all, just give me a call and I'll gladly, hopefully try to clear it up or give you more detail.
And George, if you want to give me a call sometime after the first year, we can sit down and talk about, you know, where we're at and some of the bank information. Otherwise, if you want to talk about some of these numbers and stuff like that to get up to speed.
Who is he talking to?
George.
You stop me. Yeah. I didn't hear you say George, that's why I'm saying, who are you talking to?
You gotta pay attention here, George.
Well, I'm making sure I got my notes, that way I can follow up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the time, that was a long one, but thank you.
Uh, police and public safety, Mr. DiAtley.
Um, just a couple of quick things. Um, you'll see in the, your folder that you have a thing in there on the Lexipol policy. Um, I'm gonna ask the chief to speak to that and he can help answer your questions, uh, you may have on that. So chief, if you could speak to that.
So a- as I indicated before, Lexipol is basically the nation leader in terms of policy development for police departments. We, our policies currently are all over the place. We've got policies that were written as far back as the nineteen nineties that are still in place. That is an extreme area of liability for the police department for us. Lexipol basically will develop a a canned program for us for our policies. I can tweak them, I can customize them for us. The cost to do it is about forty one hundred dollars a year. The I P R F grant would knock about a thousand dollars off of that for us. Uh, so it would cost us, the net budgetary, it would be about three thousand dollars a year. So, um, one of the advantages to Lexipol is it comes along with a training program. Every month, the officers have to do daily training bulletins, uh, there's, which I have to approve of myself. I'm creating work for myself, basically. But the officers have to do those every day. Those are based on your policy, so the officers are familiar with your policy, which is important. One of the very first things that we will get asked if we ever get sued for something is we want to see your policy manual. Um, right now, we would be at extreme disadvantage if something was to happen. So, um, giving those policies up to date is is incredibly important for us. The, the program, like I said, the I P R F grant is non-competitive. They basically take our invoice, they, they, that amount that you had seen in the, on that form that they gave us, they'll reimburse twenty five percent up to that amount. So it, for us, it'd be about a thousand dollars.
Can you use a DUI funds for this, since it would probably oversee some of the DUI training and all that?
Because the Lexipol policies only deal with some DUI issues, we would be stretching it, we'd be pushing it if we were to go that route.
Now, the good thing is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but you said you had enough to cover for the first three months in your budget now?
Yeah, because the last year, we haven't been able to do a lot of training because training was non-existent for the most part. So I've got money in my training budget that I can use to cover the the prorated amount from now until the end of the year, which should be about thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, thirteen seventy four, he has money in his budget to cover that. So going forward, we would then, you know, that would get us through April twenty twenty two. Uh, but going forward, we need to address this and make sure we have something in place.
I saw it was through April and then you had for the year, correct?
Right, yeah, it was May to May.
May, yeah.
Or May to April.
Uh, May to, that's how they base it, May to.
Yep, and then we'll include, it'll include updates. So anytime Illinois decides that they're gonna pass another mandate, they'll push out a policy that addresses that mandate. Um, they, they do a really nice job of staying on top of it.
And it's all online, not paper-based?
Yep.
Okay.
So I thank chief for, you know, looking out for the budget as well as he goes through this. But I think that, you know, it's something that we definitely want to do that takes us out of a liability standpoint going forward. That would cost us way more than four thousand dollars. Um, so I think that we need to look at that as we go into the budget area, uh, area as well, uh, to include that for next year.
But you're asking for three months for this year and that would be prior to the budget?
He's got the money to pay for that.
Okay, sorry.
So we're not asking for that at all.
Okay.
Um, that's there, so he can go ahead and do that, um, and that will get us through April of twenty twenty two.
And we just need to include. And we just need to include the four thousand dollars for?
Into the next, yeah, next year.
Going forward.
Going forward, so.
And from what, talking to people at I P R F, there's very little delay. I send them the invoice, they cut the check, they send us back the thousand dollars, so. It'll almost be an immediate refund to us. So it should be about thirty, about thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one.
Carrying cost for the.
What will they do for this first time?
Well, they would reimburse the twenty-five percent again. The problem is I would burn, I would burn the, the, the grant. A- as of January for only a three-month period, which I, I'd rather not do. I'd rather absorb it into my budget this year and then put the full amount in come May. Cause their grants are based on the year.
Oh, okay.
Lexipol goes April or May to April.
And you have the funds this year, so it makes sense.
The grant was January to December.
Right, the grant period opens Janu- or January twenty-something, twenty-third or something like that is when it opens for the year, so.
Money well spent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
It was pretty thorough.
Yeah. So, any other questions?
We saw.
Thank you, that's all, chief, anything for you?
No, no, and, and again, I put a lot of the information out there just because I'm, I, I believe in being transparent, here's that I'll lay it out for you guys out, it's just who I am, so.
Thank you.
No smoking mirrors.
Alright, thank you, chief, thank you, Steve. Uh, moving on to public buildings and environment, Mr. Thor.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mark. Moves us onto building and zoning, Mr. Pareno.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Anthony.
We're fine.
Moves us to old business. And we're back to an item here under old business, uh, office, uh, holiday office closure hours. Uh, our resolution or, uh, motion at the last meeting did not address the question. Uh. The situation is that. The office hours are scheduled different than the holiday hours. Uh, our manual says that we will be closed on Christmas Day and Christmas Eve. We addressed only half of Christmas Day or Christmas Eve. Uh, the, one of the issues is in our personnel manual, you'll see that it says work schedule. And then it says paid holidays. Work schedule, it did not list Christmas Day or Christmas Eve. And the holiday schedule, it lists Christmas Eve. So the question is, since Christmas falls on Saturday, do we start the observance on Thursday, the twenty-third? Or do we go and, or do we just stay with, they have Friday, the twenty-fourth off. And Saturday, since it's Christmas, we'll celebrate on Monday, the twenty-sixth, which means everybody will return on the twenty-seventh.
I like that idea.
I like Friday, Monday, I mean, it's.
Okay. I, uh, post office typically, if the holiday falls on Saturday, they record it on Friday. That way we move back, but you would say let them have Monday off, the twenty-seventh, and return on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yep, okay. And then New Year's is no issue because they have New Year's Day off. But no, New Year's Eve, right, is on Friday.
Is on Friday.
So they get half day off.
No, well, New Year's, so then we're gonna do that.
Oh, yeah, then, then New Year's Day would be Friday, January thirty-first. So they wouldn't, they work to Thursday, the thirtieth. And then instead of a half day on Friday, they'll just be off, they'll have the village hall closed on Friday.
And so on, Monday, the third? Yes.
Do the math in my head. Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the village hall to be closed on. Monday. December twenty-seventh. So move.
Second.
Moved by Pareno, seconded by Thorne, to authorize the village hall to be closed on Monday. The twenty-seventh of December. Since Christmas falls on Saturday, the twenty-fifth. And what happens, excuse me, what happens on, on the Christmas Eve, the twenty?
They have closed.
The whole day, okay. That's covered in the meeting. Okay, and then we will be closed on Friday, December thirty-first, in observance of New Year's Day, January first. Saturday. Okay. Alright, moved to second, any other comments, questions or discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Pareno.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Dudley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you all. Uh, the next item under old business is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve. A resolution amending the fees for the registration of motor vehicles in the village. At the meeting before last, we instructed the village attorney to change the ordinances to, so reflect the change. We have it in front of us this evening. We have a motion to so approve.
So, I will, pardon.
Second, Pareno.
Moved by Hardy, seconded by Pareno to approve the resolution of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve, amending the vehicle registration fees. Uh, tech, what we've done is increase them by ten dollars across the line. Passenger cars and vans have gone from thirty to forty, motorcycles and. Motor-driven cycles have gone from twenty-five to thirty-five. Trucks not exceeding eight thousand pounds have gone from forty-five to fifty-five. Trucks exceeding eight thousand pounds have gone from forty-five to fifty-five. Trailers have gone from ten to twenty. Okay, so my only question is, why is C and D the same price? Trucks not exceeding or eight thousand, trucks exceeding or eight thousand, they're both fifty-five dollars. Why?
I don't know, are, aren't they the same now?
Yeah, they are the same.
Yes, I thought so, uh, so I.
Why we had two different lines, you know, if you're under eight thousand, you're fifty-five, if you're over eight thousand, you're fifty-five.
All trucks.
All trucks, all trucks.
What's the weight limit in the vehicle for like a truck?
Okay.
I don't know.
Uh, we have the motion seconded, right?
Yep.
Alright, roll call, please. Uh, Mr. Pareno.
Hi.
Mr. Dudley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
I never get an answer on that first. What's the, are eight thousand pound vehicles allowed to be registered in the vehicle in, in the village? Are they allowed to park here?
Yeah.
Uh. That was, it's a light, yeah, they're not allowed on the. Commercial licensed vehicles.
That's where I'm getting at.
This is what you're getting at, and it was, uh. Chief Laney informed us that it wasn't the. Commercial license, it was the vehicle weight that we were supposed to go on.
Right, and if you remember, Steve, we raised the rate because cars are getting so much heavier, we used to have basically, I think, B, nothing more than a B plate. And I'm looking it up now, and then we raised the rating to, I wanna say ten or twelve thousand pounds is the maximum that you're gonna have in the village now. I can look it up for you, George.
Are we looking at like a cop twenty-six order or something like that?
Something like that.
I played this with the international, it's at thirty-two thousand.
Oh, okay. And the B plate is eight thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, aye.
Okay.
Alright, aye.
Just wanna make sure we have none that are, would have damaged the infrastructure.
What were we talking about?
No, we got pissed about. Okay. Mr. Nimitz.
Six affirmative votes.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz hasn't voted yet, I'm sorry.
It's an aye, three times, aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
He voted twice.
He's stuffing the ballot. Okay, six affirmative votes, no negative votes, so passes. Okay, we're getting past nine thirty, we're witching now, Joe. Uh, okay, under new business. We've got any other old businesses coming for the board? They no longer have their own business coming for the board, new business. New business, we've got Resolution five forty-one, a resolution assigning the calendar dates for our meetings next year. First and third Mondays, with the exception. January. January would be the third, the second meeting would be the eighteenth instead of the seventeenth because of President's Day. Uh, February, the second meeting would be the twenty-second, not the twenty-first.
The first one was because Martin Luther.
Martin Luther King, okay, that's right. February, that's it, back up to January. The second one is Martin Luther's King, okay, seventeenth is Martin Luther, so it'd be the eighth.
So it'd be the eighteenth.
So when we move to February. It'd be the twenty-second rather than the twenty-first for the second meeting because of President's Day.
Correct.
Okay. Then. March, we don't have any changes, do we? That's it. The next big change is.
July fifth.
July fifth.
Is it Tuesday?
And then Labor Day.
Monday is the fourth.
Right.
Okay.
And Labor Day. Leave.
They always have September.
Yeah, September, Labor Day.
Labor Day would be the sixth.
Sixth, yeah.
Instead of the fifth.
That should do it.
That's it. Any changes? So.
Village clerk have to amend this to add, cause here it says September fifth, twenty twenty-two is a Tuesday. So I hear that, but say.
That's a sixth.
Tuesday is sixth.
Yeah.
And then the, and add the word Tuesday to the July fifth, twenty twenty-two date. If that's six. So with those two, with those. Two changes, and then the January, the first January is, uh, the third?
Third.
Yeah.
Then, now technically we can move that to the, or not, hold on.
Oh, that, that works.
That works, that works. Yeah, Saturday's the first, okay, that works. We're taking Friday, the thirty-first. Okay, or not.
It's.
First.
January third is not a holiday.
No, it's not.
I don't believe.
We could make it one. Okay. Any other corrections or additions? We got a motion?
Nope.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the dates for calendar year twenty twenty-two. With the village clerk making those adjustments of January third. Adding the word Tuesday for Jan- July the fifth. And changing the date in September from September five to September six. Second, DiAtly.
Moved by Pareno, seconded by DiAtly to approve the, the schedule of meetings for the calendar year twenty twenty-two. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Pareno.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Any other new business to come before the board?
I move for adjourn. Saturday.
Move by, DiAtly, seconded by Pareno, to adjourn, roll call, please. Mr. Pareno.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six, I count six affirmative votes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Having it once like this, it's all tires.
George, can you still hear me?
This table, Kyle over there, there were all guys there, there are.